Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, September 21st, 2020. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 6th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. On August 11th, 2020, a notice was sent to both the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger that this meeting would be a remote meeting. And on September 8th, 2020, a notice was sent to both publications that the meeting would be held remotely using communication equipment via Zoom due to COVID-19 restrictions. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. And just a little housekeeping rules. If everyone could please mute yourself until it's time for you to speak. Be present to the camera and the call itself. If you need to divert your attention elsewhere, please make sure you're muted and turn off your camera. Any excessive movement or activity is distracting to other people on the Zoom meeting. Please take your video call in quiet locations, and whenever possible, sign in using Wi-Fi. It's also best if you keep all electronic equipment off except the device that you're using to keep feedback to a minimum. If you're on your phone, shut off the microphones on your computer and vice versa. Thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Orozco. Hold on one second.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Sayah.
Here.
Mr. Kanter.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Troply, you might swear in the professionals, please.
Not at all. Professionals, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got.
I do.
Thank you. Tonight, I see we have Ms. Bell, we have Mr. Cunliffe and Mr. Howard all sworn for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Well, approval of minutes.
There are no minutes this evening.
Vouchers.
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence.
I have no correspondence, but I will let you know that I did send a notice to both the papers that beginning October 5th, our meetings will begin at 7:00 PM for the remainder of the year. And that's all I have.
All board members understand that our next meeting will be at 7:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Resolutions?
I have no resolutions this evening.
Okay, then let's move right straight on in. Okay, first case before the board, case number BA 1925, Brian Mayer, use various preliminary final major site plan. Application of Brian Mayer as applicant owner seeking a use variance preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct 2,400 square foot, 40 by 48 building adjacent to the gravel parking area with 300 square foot of office space and 2,100 square foot of garage shop space and 750 square feet, 25 by 30 addition to existing dwelling on the front of the property. They are also proposing to add seven gravel parking spaces for employee parking and a paved handicap van accessible parking space with the ADA curb ramp and sidewalk to the entrance of the proposed building. The applicant is proposing a 3,278 square foot driveway access easement and a landscape easement for adjacent lot 1602 in order to utilize the existing driveway on adjacent lot 1603 for access to the rear gravel parking area and garage shop building. Access will also still be provided from the existing gravel located along the south side of lot 1602 on premises known as block 219, lot 1602, 548 Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. This application was originally scheduled for July 13th, 2020, when it was carried to August 10th, 2020 with no further notice. On August 10th, 2020, it was carried to September 21st, 2020 with notice. Expiration date, September 30th, 2020.
Mr. Chair, before we begin, I just want to show Sherry Sparrow has joined us. Maybe Mr. Troply can swear in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Troply?
Yes. Sherry, raise your right hand, please. Swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self you got.
I do.
Thank you. Ms. Sparrow has now been sworn for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Whose case is this? Is it your case? Todd? Okay. Unmute yourself.
Oh, Todd.
Okay, Mr. Cohen. How many witnesses do you have for this application?
I have an engineer, the applicant, and a planner, Mr. Higgins, who's on Zoom.
Why don't we go ahead and swear everybody in, if you don't mind?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have two of my clients here, Brian and Chris Mayer. I have them both sworn. Chris is going to do the majority of the testimony, but Brian may chime in, so we might as well just swear them both in.
Okay.
And Todd, who else do we have?
We have Richard DiFolco as the professional engineer, James Higgins as professional planner, and Brian and Chris Mayer, M-A-Y-E-R, as the applicant.
Very good. I would ask that all of those named witnesses, please raise your right hand, and we'll swear you all in now. Do you swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Todd, starting with the folks on your end, can we have everyone's appearance there, please?
Richard DiFolco, D-I-F-O-L-C-O, licensed New Jersey engineer.
Thank you.
Chris Mayer, M-A-Y-E-R.
Very good.
Brian Mayer.
Thank you. Jim?
And James Higgins.
Very good. All sworn for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cohen, what are you here for?
Not me, I'm nothing. Just kidding. I'm going to give you just a brief opening, so you understand why we're here. And then we're going to have Mr. DiFolco testify first with regard to laying out the project itself. Then I'm going to have Chris Mayer testify as to the business operation proposed on site, and then we're going to have Mr. Higgins wrap things up with our justification for our variances. Sound good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So as you mentioned, this application involves two lots, lots 1602 and 1603. Lot 1602 contains a single-family house, which the applicant, Brian Mayer, resides in with his family. They've been there since 2003. And they're seeking, in addition to the commercial application, we're seeking to add a 750 square foot addition to the house. The commercial aspect would be a 2,400 square foot building on site to house the family geothermal well drilling business. Lot 1603, as you mentioned, that'll provide the access that wraps around lot 1602. That is owned by Chris Mayer, who I mentioned is Brian's brother and partner in the geothermal well drilling business. And that would be a permanent easement across lot 1603 to serve 1602. The house on 1603, there is a house located in the rear of 1603 that is occupied by the mayor's father, but that's not part of the commercial aspect of it. Chris Mayer also owns lot 15, which is one of the lots to the north of this property. The application generates two use variances, one for a business that is not permitted in the ARE-6 zone, the 2-zone, 6 to 2. And the second one is two principal buildings on one lot. This is a very eclectic area as far as zoning goes. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's a huge mix of commercial, residential, both public and private uses, all of which are up and down this part of Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. We believe that this useful fit in in the neighborhood as it has for the past 14 years. The site plan is a direct consequence of the issuance of a zoning violation, and as a result, the applicant is looking to make the use legal, obtain the required variances, and aesthetically improve the site. With that being said, and Mr. DiFolco being sworn, unless there's any questions, general questions, we can begin our engineering presentation.
Charlie, before you move forward, you had said it needed two variances. Well, you also need a farmland variance also, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we do have, there's a farmland, technically a farmland buffer required because the 83-foot driveway aspect of lot 1603 is technically part of the farmland, but there's absolutely, you know, we're going to testify to it later, but...
I think what Todd was just stating overall, from a use perspective, they need two different use variances. So there's the D1 because its commercial uses are not permitted in this ARE-2 zone, and then also they have an existing residential use and building on the lot, and proposing a second principal use and building, which is the commercial shop slash garage for the well drilling business. So it's two separate use variances. And then obviously, there's a line share of different buffering release, which they're asking for, and I can summarize it real quickly. To the east and to the south is lot 1603, which Todd indicated was owned by Chris Mayer, the brother of the applicant that's listed on the application, to Mr. Brian Mayer. That lot 1603 contains a residential and Q farm use. So our ordinance requires any preliminary major final site plan where a residential butts a commercial use, if they're commercial, or sorry, where a commercial butts a residential or farm use, the commercial use has to provide a 50-foot buffer to that residential and farm use. So along the entirety of the east property line and, you know, the southerly property line, at least in the immediate vicinity of the commercial shop building and parking area, would require a 50-foot buffer. And I'll let, you know, Ms. Bell chime in on that requirement with regards to the entirety of the south lot line. Also, to the north, while it does contain a commercial use, our ordinance is written in a manner that says "commercial" to residential use or zone. So if you read it strict for the language, a residential buffer would be required along the northerly property line adjacent to lot 1601. However, as I mentioned, it is a commercial use, so you'd effectively be buffering commercial to commercial. In addition to that, there are some old variances regarding side yard setbacks for the proposed shop building. As I mentioned, the requirement for 50-foot buffer along the north property line for the residential zone, and then along the southerly property line for the farm buffer. We measure our principal setbacks from the required buffers. The shop building from both the north and the south 50-foot buffer is setback seven and a half feet where 30 feet is required in the zone for side yard setbacks. I would note, you know, obviously, I think the applicant's here seeking relief from those 50-foot buffer requirements. If the board were to seek or to rule favorably on granting relief of those buffers, you know, the building would be 50, make sure I say that correctly, 57 and a half feet from the north and south side lot line. And then there's some other, little bit more ancillary, very briefly regarding lighting throughout the gravel parking area. But I'll leave that to ask some questions once we get into the engineering testimony by Mr. DiFolco.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, since the buffers apparently are going to be a large topic of discussion, I think it would be a good idea if the board had an overall picture of what the site looks like today and what the buffers look like. We had just sent that, recently sent the picture over to Mr. Howard, I believe. Is he there? Can we?
Yep.
I'd like to have... Who took this picture?
He took it near map. Aerial company.
I'm going to have Rich identify this picture, and then we're going to just walk you through the site so you can see what's there already today as far as buffers go, so when our discussion goes further, you'll see what we're talking about. Richard, could you identify this photo, please?
Yes, the photo was...
Oh, it's gone.
It's gone.
Wait, did I hit something? I don't know.
Oh, yeah. The photo was taken from an aerial company called NearMap. It's taken from the south. It was taken October 2019, one year ago approximately. And it's elevated view, and it shows the property. The word site is located pretty much at the front third of the property. You can see Brian's home. You can see the driveway to Brian's property. And just to the south of Brian's driveway is the driveway to the rear lot, lot 1603. Lot 1603 is paved for the first 50 feet, give or take, and then it becomes a gravel driveway as you proceed further to the east. Right now, there's the gravel parking area for the company's vehicles, which is that rectangular section just to the right of the word site. And you can see the existing evergreen buffer that is installed around that parking lot, both to the north and to the east. There's also a buffer along the south side of that parking lot, which is broken where the entrance driveway comes into the parking lot. Further to the south, along the south side of that flag lot, the flag pole part of the flag lot on lot 1603, you can see another buffer that was planted by Chris Mayer along the lot line of that flag portion of that driveway. So there's an evergreen buffer existing along the south side. There's an evergreen buffer along the north side of that driveway easement. There's a larger buffer along the property line around the gravel parking area. And then to the east of that buffer at the parking area, you can see what the Q farm is being used for. The Q farm is Chris's Christmas tree farm. There's no animals. There's no barn. It's pretty much the front yard of the home, which you can't see. You can see the home in the upper right corner of the map, but to the front of that is an additional area where there's Christmas tree farm. That's the Q farm area that is on Chris's lot. So Chris owns the lot to the east, and his brother owns the lot to the west of that buffer. They both own the company, but Chris has the Q farm assessment for his tree farm.
Todd, if I could just chime in, I just want to clarify or ask some questions to clarify for the board's perspective on it. So when we're saying buffer, it's existing landscape plantings, whether it be evergreen or like shade type of trees, and it's not actually a 50-foot wide buffer. You're just saying there's existing vegetation along the north, the east, and the south side of the parking area in the subject property. And it's not really the full 50 feet. It varies in width. And then to the east, as far as, I think, Rich alluded to Mr. Mayer's or Chris Mayer's Christmas tree farming, the additional plantings kind of in that little triangular portion between the driveway on 1603 and then the rowa evergreens on the east side of the gravel parking area, is that part of the Christmas tree farm? Or are those permanent plantings that stay there? Or do those get, you know, cut down every year or whatever, every couple of years for their Christmas tree use?
Those are permanent plantings. The Christmas tree harvesting happens on the opposite side of the driveway in front of the residence. There's probably a few there now, but they were planted down by the, there's a tree clearing limit, and it's pretty much planted up to the east of the house and to the south of the house.
Okay.
And the property to the north is a, that large white building with the solar panels on the roof, that is an existing commercial building. Light manufacturing happens inside that building. Their pavement is right on the applicant's property line. There is no separation between the paved parking lot and the applicant's property. So the applicant has placed additional buffering along that paved limit within lot 1602. And again, it's not a 50-foot wide buffer, but it's a planted buffer along the lot line of 1602.
Okay. And then as far as just the landscaping adjacent to 1603, all that buffering predominantly is on 1603, right? Not on the subject 1602, I guess, which is the lot that's the subject of the well drilling business, right?
Right. And let's call it geothermal company rather than well drilling, because the primary business is geothermal. And because it's geothermal, they do drill wells to put the systems in. But it's a geothermal engineering company that installs geothermal services, and the well drilling is part of that operation. It's not a well drilling per se. It's geothermal. Yeah, so Chris will talk about that further, but just to make that
Okay.
Minor clarification.
And then as far as the gravel parking area that's back there, so there's no like binding agents, no billings, it's been gravel, and can, does the applicant have any idea how long that's been there for the boards? You know, I think Todd indicated that the use has kind of been operating there under the radar. Has it always been in association with the geothermal use? Cut me off if this is something that you feel your applicant should be providing testimony to on time.
Well, he's going to testify to the timeframe. He's been there and what's been there.
But it's a stable subbase of gravel. It's a dry area. It's well-compacted, and he's got, on the plan, it lists his vehicles, item by item, directly onto the plan. Upper left corner of the plan sheet, the site plan sheet, it lists all of his equipment that he has, that he uses for the company. And he'll also testify to the fact that a lot of his equipment is job site oriented, so he'll have a job and maybe two or three pieces of equipment will be at the job until it's done, and then he'll move to the next job and not come back to the yard per se on a daily basis.
Okay. But so I guess the lines that I'm getting at is, you know, has it existed since the early 2000s, and it's less than an acre disturbance? And I think for our ordinance, we don't consider gravel as an impervious area, so it's something that's existed, and it's less than like what would be the threshold for a major development? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct interpretation, yes.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment, Mr. Chair. We can keep going, Todd.
Right. I just don't, technically, I don't think we ever qualified Mr. DiFolco as professional engineer, so we might want to do that now.
Yes, sir.
I would recommend it, you know, for the purposes of what we've just done, let's mark that exhibit as, I believe it's A9, Eileen? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, it is A9.
And we'll mark that as an aerial view of the property. And so now, now that you're going into the testimony in chief, Scott, I'm sorry, Todd, I'll turn it over to you to qualify, Rich.
Rich, could you put your credentials on the record as a professional engineer, please?
Yes, licensed in the state of New Jersey, attended Rutgers University, graduated from the civil engineering department. Since 19, I guess, 88, I've owned JKR Engineering, a civil engineering firm, which does private engineering services in Monmouth County. I've appeared before Howells Planning and Zoning Boards numerous times, as well as dozens of other county, townships in the county since that time. Prior to, prior to me starting my company, I was employed as a project engineer with T&amp;M Associates and also at CME Associates. So I've been on both sides. I've been municipal engineer, serving as planning board engineer for the township of Middletown and from an Alpa township.
We accept your credentials?
Thank you. Rich, could you briefly describe the application before the board decision?
Yes, the applicant wants to put up a 2,400 square foot building, which will comprise a small office, restroom, and three-bay garage shop area. There'll be a septic system installed for the bathroom of the shop. There'd be dry wells installed to catch the runoff from the new building's roof, and that will be percolated back into the ground. There'll be a handicap spot installed along the side of the building by the entrance door. That'll be a paved surface. There'll be a six-foot solid fence installed between the westerly limit, the rear wall of the building, and running north-south across the property to basically shield the operations in the back from any of you from Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. The site plan shows the footprint of each of the vehicles that fit on the property. There's also a small dumpster that is in the back corner of the property.
Rich, hang on just a second. Matt, is there any way we could put the site plan up that you're speaking about? Because I've got the...
Just one second.
Drawings here. I can't read them.
There you go. All right. So that shows, that shows the proposed building, which is shaded in slightly. Within the footprint of that shaded in area where it says office, there is an existing shed, and the note says the shed is to be relocated and has to be brought up towards the back of the existing garage, which is right behind the residence. So the shed is proposed to be moved right behind the garage. You can see that on the plan. Also, part of the site plan, where you're right there, there's a proposed addition to the rear of the home, which is not going to contain any bedrooms or basement. It's just basically a big, like a great room kind of a thing for him to have attached to the home. So that's a proposed addition to the home for his personal use, not associated with the business, not any new bedrooms, and no basement. We figured we'd show that because he wants to do that also, so at least we get that on the record as to what he plans to do.
Rich, the plans stay with, can you confirm that is no basement? Matt, you broke up on that. The plans say it's with a basement, so I just want to confirm.
The plans say it's with a basement. So I just want to confirm.
Says with basement.
Well, yeah, okay. I'm just hearing from the applicant. It could be one or the other. He doesn't prefer one or the other. But if it did have a basement, it would need to meet the town's two foot separation to water table code. And, and not really have any steps inside the house. So that can be determined from a test pit. We did the test pit for the septic. And it's very, very flat grade in that one area, roughly elevation 80.5, 80.6. So I think if it's anything typical, eight foot plus the slab, basement is probably not going to be feasible in that location. So that note should say without basement. Okay? The with basement was, should have a little O after the slash.
Okay. So it's without basement.
Without basement. Correct.
Okay.
All right. And so the access to the site is something we should talk about. The access is the existing gravel drive, which begins at Squonkam Yellowbrook. And the first 50 feet of it is paved. It's 24 feet wide in general and pretty straight alignment, pretty straight grade. And it wraps around the property and goes to the back to, to the, the home in the back, which is occupied by the brother's father. Right now, that driveway has an opening which cuts into the gravel parking area, the rectangular parking area. And also behind the residence on, on lot 1602, the driveway extends parallel to the sideline and also connects to the gravel parking area. The business itself, which Mr. Mayor will testify to, does not get day to day customers. Most of the larger deliveries are to the job site. And when he does get a, an Amazon box or FedEx box, it's a small type vehicle, not tractor trailer deliveries. The site is serviced by septic, as I said. There is a well on the property. And the well is extended to the rear shed today. The shed has water in the back. Utilities, utilities are existing to that back area of the property.
Rich, the driveway on 1602.
Yes.
Okay. It comes from the back up to the garage? Does that go all the way through to, to the?
All the way to the street. Yes.
It does go all the way to the street.
Yeah. It, it services the home and the garage. And then it goes along the side of the garage. And then it terminates at the gravel parking lot.
So Rich, I guess the applicant is gonna is there, is there, is the applicant proposing to utilize both of those existing driveways? The one on 1602 and then also the, the one with the access easement on 1603?
Well, since he lives in the house, when he goes to work, he just drives his car behind the garage into the shop area. And that's what he would propose to do rather than going out to Squonkam Road and coming in the other driveway. The trucks in the parking don't use that personal driveway. The trucks and the equipment, the trailers all use the large driveway, which is on 1603. Only his own personal use, he would go to 1602 for in and out, grab a sandwich or something to go get lunch and come back. So he doesn't use 1602 for truck access at all. 1603 is the main access to the yard. 1602 is his personal access point.
Okay. So from the parking area behind the single family dwelling, the gravel parking area, he comes out of that, makes a left, goes north and then parks his vehicle up in that gravel parking area.
Right.
Okay. And there's no other commercial coming in from that residential?
That's correct.
So my comment or suggestion to the board is, you know, if that's the case and the applicant wishes to continue to use that for his own residential access to the back of the property there, I would recommend some kind of signage at the entrance to Squonkam Yellowbrook Road there, you know, saying residential driveway, you know, no commercial, something to that effect. So that way, you know, we're not having two residential, commercial driveways for one commercial use. And then I would also say at the, I guess it's the western end, southwestern corner of the gravel parking area, some similar type of signage to saying no trucks prohibited beyond this point or something to that effect. Or no commercial vehicles beyond this point. So that way it's just clearly regulated that it's just the applicant's residential access to that gravel parking area in the back and
Rest of like private driveway would work too?
Yeah. I mean, so
As you might notice on the site plan, we do not have an ID sign or a project sign or a building sign. We have no sign because we have no people coming here. It's really his own yard. He doesn't need to advertise. He doesn't have a sign on the, on the street. So it's a very discreet operation.
Yeah. I, I mean, my concern would just be like any of the commercial vehicles coming out of the gravel parking area, deciding whether or not they wanted to use either of the two driveways. You know, I would say if you're saying we need to have access through 1603, then there needs to be some kind of prohibition on them utilizing the existing driveway on 1602.
Right. And the signs, we can put the signs up and we can get the verbiage, whatever verbiage works. We can put no commercial vehicles, private driveway only, whatever works. That's fine. So with, with regard to the rest of the site plan, the existing grade of the parking lot was maintained and we just ramped up slightly outside the three doors to make that entrance gradual into the new slab elevation. We're not regrading the entire area there. It's just a little bit of the paving is, is a handicap grade. So with less than 2% on that little bit of pavement outside the, the entrance door. And some minor grading with gravel just to blend that new elevation of the handicap area back into the what's there today. We have some outdoor floodlights at the building, which don't light up the entire parking lot. They only, if you look at the lighting plan, they're cut off. The zero foot candles is maybe halfway through the lot and then it dies off to nothing. We don't want to light the whole place up. It's just when they come back during this time of the year and from now till like February and it's a little bit dark, just the place to get to the front door and get in and get out and close the lights and go home. It's not, there's no operation at night other than the men returning the vehicles or the owner working at the back of that shop. But they don't use the parking lot. No customers. Everybody's gone pretty much. And most of the employees will drive to the job site. So there may be, you know, four or five employee vehicles here. The rest of them have the, the larger trucks and they go right to the job site with their own vehicles. Chris Mayer will explain the operation in greater detail.
So just to clarify a little bit, Rich, I think for the board. So I guess, you know, what you're saying is during normal business hours, when the site is fully lit, would be the only time when you'd anticipate any like Amazon or anyone delivering to the site or any minor material deliveries to the site. Anything after hours for lighting would be like employees of the company that are familiar with the parking area and the operations of the park, of, of the, of the commercial component of the site. Correct?
That's correct. We have a dry well, which I briefly explained. And that does catch the one year runoff storm. And we did a perk test on the side of the building. And the water table is about five feet below the surface. And the soil is suitable for the percolation to occur. So that roof will be piped into a dry well.
Is that something that you submitted with the application, Rich? Or is that something you did subsequent to my review letter?
I believe that the, yeah, it was, it's on the plan and you probably don't have the calculation on the volume, but the volume, I could give you that. The volume of the dry wells, we have three, let's just say, can't see it, 600 gallons. Three 600 gallon dry wells, which is 1,800 gallons.
Yeah. The more so where I would just go is, you know, I think a dry well obviously is a good thing. It's an added benefit for the building there. I just want to make sure I can see if it's already provided on the plan, plans the board real favorably as a residential compliance item, you know, just the soil logs with the infiltration of the water table.
That we have and that I can give you.
Just in case the dry well needs to be shallower and, you know, different dimensions, like, you know, we can have it worked out as a residential compliance item.
So I think these are the three foot deep dry well. So they're very shallow, but they're wider. So they don't go down deep. Five foot water table, I think we stay two feet above it with the bottom of the dry well.
Gotcha. And then I just want to reclarify for the board with the lighting. So obviously they're asking for relief of the minimum light intensity kind of around the perimeter of the parking area. So the north, east and west. And I would say it's up to the board's consideration, but the applicant's provided testimony that it's only employees or the owners of the site who are going to be operating there after hours and are going to be familiar with the site. It's not going to be the general public coming in. So I would take issue with the board if they wanted to grant relief of that, given the applicant's proposed, you know, use being that it's just people familiar with the site after hours.
And as far as location of the proposed building, we chose a place behind the adjacent building to the north, which is a large, that large light manufacturing business directly north of us. So that we are basically screened from view by that large building and also by the fence that proposed. And we're back 310 feet from the front lot line. So it's, it's not very pronounced or visible from the street. It is a one story building. We have that picture. So Matt, if you could put on the, the, the picture of the building that's proposed. This is a, like a butler building with three doors and a man door. A little cupola on top, green roof and a tan siding with green foundation. Now technically it's longer than 50 feet. It's 60 feet long. And we would need a, either a waiver from the design standard where the code requires any building greater than 50 feet to have a three foot embellishment, I guess you'd call it, or jog in the front elevation. We could do that by adding a pilaster, extending the roof line. But we think it's, it's far enough away from any adjacent viewpoints that it would be a de minimis impact on, on the surrounding area by leaving it the way it's, comes out of the box, basically. But we could add to it to meet the code if that's something that is required by the board. But it's a handsome building. It's low profile, blends into the, the area. And that's similar to, that's what he wants to put up, something as simple as that. That's not the actual picture of the building. That's a rendering of the building.
Can we mark that as A10, please?
Sure.
What do the other two sides of the building look like?
The rear of the building is going to be the same siding. No windows in the back. There will be windows on the north side, which is similar to the south side, the short side of the building. We'll have two windows.
Well, I know, I know Jim, if she was here, she would be questioning having that break in, in the building, not having it. Just, I, I know it's way back there. I, I know her and her standards, she, she usually, she wants to see that break. So
Yeah, I really, I really think that the plain back wall with no windows or anything is really not acceptable. There needs to be something on it to break it up a little bit.
We could put windows in the back wall. That's not a problem. We just thought, you know, it's bright enough in there. It's only going to be used with the lights on. So
And it faces that
Yeah. It's facing the fence. There's a six foot fence right behind it. And we could put windows that you might see the tops of the windows from behind the fence. But that, that back elevation could be made less boring with windows for sure. The materials, the materials would be that metal siding.
Yeah, I really think a little bit more needs to be done to the building to kind of become more in line with the township's architectural standards.
Okay. I don't think the applicant
He's not objectionable to that. We could put pilasters in there and put a couple of things that look like columns, vertical columns up there. That would meet the code, I believe. As long as a three foot measurement.
I agree.
Rich, I just want to clarify for my edification on it too. So we're saying there's a fence proposed behind the building. Is there actually a six foot fence right, proposed right behind the building? Or is it, we're just saying it meets the
Okay. Now, now that's right, Charlie. It does, it butts up to each corner. The building itself is the, is not, the fence is not at the building, right? So the fence stops at the building. Then you have the building. Then the fence picks up again on the other side. So there is no fence right behind the building. So you would see that, that large wall of the building. So windows would probably work in some, some decorative pilaster as well. Again, it's 300 feet off the road.
Yeah, no, I just was, for my own, just wanted to clarify, you know, a fence right behind the back of a building. I don't know that that necessarily makes sense. So just wanted to clarify for my own edification.
And we could all, we could also plant some evergreen trees behind the building too, which would, which would serve. So we can do what's required of the building. We could also supplement that with evergreen buffering as well. We seem to stay about 10 feet away from the septic field. But we have room to, we have room, we have about 20 feet between the building and the septic field. So we have room for evergreens to go in there. We can add those right along the side of the building as well.
And, and then just so I'm clear to Rich, so for the parking area on the south side of the building, is there a separate door on the south facade? Or is it, is, is it on the eastern, or I guess the southeastern corner on the eastern facade as you showed in that architectural rendering? Or is that just like an example mockup?
That was a mockup. The door is actually on the south side of the building as shown on the site plan, adjacent to the handicap space.
Gotcha. All right. Gone right into the office slash bath.
Right. But it would still be the same type of door.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that I knew where the egress was. Okay. Thank you.
It's on the south side, one man door.
Charlie, do you have any more questions for Mr. DeFalco?
Yeah. So looking at the aerial, and it's, I don't know that it's readily clear from the, from the site plan. It looks like there's at least one large tree existing in the middle of the gravel parking area. Is that to remain, to be removed? It might, it looks like there might even be a little bit of grass there. Is that removed and replaced with stone or what's happening there?
That, that one tree that's in that parking lot is, it's half dead and we're going to take care of the other half of it with a chainsaw. So it is going to be removed and a little bit of grass will be gravel raked over gravel. So that is there and we're grabbing around it now, but it's, it's not a healthy tree and it will be removed.
Okay. And then for me, you know, a typical thing that the board would ask on an application like this with construction vehicles or heavy equipment, anything with like hydraulic lines and diesel. Obviously you're proposing the whole entire parking area to be gravel. So they do need a waiver from the pavement section required for parking areas. So the ordinance requires parking spaces, light duty to be an inch and a half of HMA surface course with three inches of base course. Heavy duty areas like major circulation aisles are required Heavy-duty areas like major circulation aisles are required to have two inches and four inches of top and surf and base asphalt. Being that this is something that has existed for a period of time with vehicle traffic, I would say, I would not take issue if the board would like to grant relief of the pavement section requirement, at least for the majority of the parking area. Anytime we're adding impervious area, then we're, you know, kicking it into major development stormwater management requirements. What I would say is, the board has required parking areas for heavy equipment to be on like concrete pads and things of that nature. I think the board should consider it for this application, and I would leave at least for maybe the limit in how many parking spaces pending Mr. Mayor's testimony regarding the actual number of, you know, vehicles and maybe the characteristics of them. I know you listed on the table, but for like the layman, maybe just a little bit indication of what it, what each vehicle is and what it does and kind of, you know, what would be involved with it.
Right, and Mr. Mayor will testify as to his maintenance and upkeep of those vehicles, because he's very cognizant of the fact that leaky hydraulics is not a good thing. He brings these geothermal equipment pieces to environmental sites that are somebody's home, and it can't be a piece of leaking equipment. So he has a very high standard for maintenance, maintenance, and the trucks go out to a shop in Jackson for regular maintenance. And if anything, if a hose breaks or something leaks, he fixes it immediately. It's not like this is a junkyard. These are active pieces of equipment that he uses every day, and they're in top shape. So it's not something that the board should be concerned about. But Mr. Mayor will explain further how much he does maintain these vehicles and how important their operation is to his, to his business.
And I know, Mr. DeFalco, I, I want to jump in real quick. I, I understand Mr. Mayor, you know, is, is up to date on his equipment, making sure there's no leaks and this, that, and other. But this is a variance. It goes with the property. Mr. Mayor decides to sell the property, you know, somebody else can move right in and have all this leaky equipment, and, you know, we, we have no recourse. So, you know, thi- this is a variance, so, you know, we're gonna kind of hold to what, you know, as, as far as heavy equipment and equipment, we're gonna hold to that, hold our ground as far as the concrete pads. I, I'm going to let you know that real quick.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, just, just for the heavy equipment, for the parking spots, okay.
Right.
Well, we can, we can categorize that and, and see how many we have and put them in a certain area. So we have one area that's going to be for heavy equipment. Instead of having spaces scattered around, we could maybe designate one side of that parking lot for the heavy equipment.
Okay, okay. I appreciate it. Is that, that good, Charles?
Uh, yeah, and what I would just say is, obviously, you know, now with the concrete, we are adding a little bit of impervious. I don't know that we necessarily want to recharge any of the stuff from a concrete pad with heavy vehicles. I would say, Rich, if there's a way to increase the drywall to make up for that increased stormwater runoff from the building, you know what I mean? So it's a net zero between the two.
Well, I still think we're under the threshold of disturbance. I don't think we would be triggering any of that requirement.
No, what I'm saying is, you're proposing a drywall. You say it's for the one-year storm for the building. Now we're adding a concrete pad, just maybe expanding the drywells. I, I don't want you to recharge the, any runoff from the, the concrete pad, but maybe increase the drywall in size a little bit to make up for that added impervious of the.
Overpopping stayed off the roof. I got you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And then Charlie? For the remaining, for the remaining gravelled area, do we, uh, do we look to an oil-water separator or something for the remaining vehicles? Do we encompass the, uh, the gravel parking area where the equipment is laying up? Because when I look at the building and I got three bays, and we say that we maintain the, the equipment on a regular basis, then that means maintenance is going on. So then, you know, there, 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 there's a couple.
Excuse me, real quick, we don't maintain the, yeah, but the, Mr. Mayor will testify. We don't maintain those vehicles on site. A place in Jackson takes care of all the trucks.
So, Mr. Say, what, what I'll say is, and I think the intent of the concrete pad, and the board has required it, is, you know, they bring a piece of equipment back to the, uh, to the yard, and, you know, things happen with heavy equipment, you know, a line might break or, or something to that effect, and you might get a little drip and a leak. So at least it's on a concrete pad and not going straight into the gravel and to the soils beneath it. If the maintenance that they're performing is just minor, you know, replacing a tire or something like that, that effective, where there's not really any changing of fluids and liquids, I, I would say, you know, a concrete pad, just for the purposes of an emergency situation, you don't have a leak right onto the ground. I don't know that we need to require any oil-water separators or anything of that nature. But I'll leave that, I'll just reserve final comment on that, just based on any type of testimony from the applicant as regards to what maintenance activities are, are, are actually proposed. So. That answers your question, Mr. Say. Let me know if it does not.
No, that, that, that answers it. You know, if, in lieu of that, you know, depending on the types of vehicles, and if there are some vehicles that are not that heavy, but yet are quantifiably highly hydraulic and, and fuel oil and other oils associated with it, then maybe they need to be panned or something like that when they're in the sitting position. Over.
So what, what I would say, you know, on a major site development, you know, you're, you're required to, for a parking area, drain that water to an infiltration basin to get like suspended solids removals and things like that, but there's no specific regulation in the DAP stormwater management regulations with regards to oil-water separators or things like that. And this, this application is not even a, a major development from a stormwater management perspective. So I think that the concrete is just for any emergency spills that might happen. You know, certainly if the applicant agreed to provide a spill kit in the garage building, I think would be a good thing for the site as a whole, just in case that, you know, something does happen and they need to rectify any spills. For me, the stormwater management was just expand the drywall to make up for any, you know, runoff for the concrete pad. So I think that would be acceptable, you know.
And the applicant agrees to have a spill kit on hand in the garage in case of emergency. He will do that.
That works.
Mr. Chair, it's probably a good time to hear from the applicant now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Going to have him switch seats with Rich. This is Chris Mayer. He's been previously sworn. Chris, what's, what's the name of your business?
Able Environmental.
And how long has the company been in business?
We've been in business since 1942.
Obviously not started by you?
No, started by my grandfather and my father's two older brothers.
And before you relocated to this site in 2003, you were in Point Pleasant?
Were previously in Point Pleasant and Elizabeth before that.
And you've been at this site, working at this site since 2003, is that correct?
Yes.
And just for the record, 1602 is owned by your brother Brian and his wife, and 1603 is owned by you, is that correct?
By me and my wife.
Your wife, okay. 1603 is going to contain the easement for access to the business, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you generally describe what geothermal dwell, well, what you do?
What we do is, there's, there's no other company in the state I know that does the full encompassing of, we design and build geothermal systems for buildings and houses. And like I said, we're one of the few companies, we do the design, we do all the drilling, the underground piping into the building, all the mechanical work in the building, the heating and air conditioning units that connect to them, the distribution system, and then we maintain them for the, uh, the life of the, life of the equipment.
And what's the deal with geothermal? Why is that a good thing?
It's, uh, it's the cleanest type of heat out there. It's the most economical to run. It's sustainable, and it's got the longest life cycle of any heating and air conditioning equipment. It's got very little impact on the environment, because what you're doing is, you've got a building that's, you want to maintain about 70 degrees, and 55 degrees we can pull out of the earth, and then we got to get that other 15 degrees, you know, to heat the building, and in the cooling mode, we've already exceeded that. So alls we're doing is, is heat exchange with it.
Now, we had some discussion about the, the typical building, the 2,400 square foot building, and, and we talked about the architecture. So what about the inside of the building? What's, what's going to go on in there?
There's going to be an office inside. It work, a small outfit. There's, uh, there's six of us right now. We can go up to eight or as small as four, depending on, on the economy. We've been pretty steady here. I do, uh, I do most of the office and the estimating and sales. All my sales are done outside, and then I have a electrical engineer that works with me in the office. The building is generally to take any outside storage and put it inside. We carry a certain amount of, of pipe fitting, sometimes ducted units, pumps, right, for smaller stuff. On the larger jobs, anything trucked will be delivered to the site. The equipment, the same way. These jobs go anywhere from a couple weeks to, I mean, we've had one we've been on for two years. So the equipment goes out and it gets shuffled from site to site. If we're not busy, these parking places will be full. Generally, they, generally, they won't be full. There's something going on all the time.
Charlie, if I could just come, jump in and ask a couple clarifying questions. So I think you said right now you have six employees, but depending on the season and kind of workload, it could be anywhere from four to eight.
Right.
Is eight, what you would anticipate, like in your wildest dream, if the use were to expand? Or, you know, do you ever anticipate more than eight employees for that?
No, not here, and I don't anticipate growing to that. I've been in this 32 years. My youngest son is in it. He's the fourth generation. And I don't anticipate growing at any. I got a nice little market right now. We don't have to advertise for any of our work at all. It all comes through the door from, from previous clients. So that's about as far as I'm going to take it.
Okay, and then as far as materials or things like that, you said for the most part, all the, the large bulk items get delivered right to the job site, but there's a chance you might have small pumps? Or like, you know, is there any potential that you'd have excess materials, wall casing or anything like that stored on the site? And if so, is it in the building? Is it in the?
Yeah, our, our idea is to store that inside is what we'd like to do with it. Yeah, and yes, we, we could have some excess. We can, we'll carry a small amount. And then yearly, I mean, we run a, a pretty tight operation. It's because it's small, it's tightly controlled. Anything that is, you know, we may store some stuff for a year, and after that, it ends up, you know, going out in the dumpster.
Okay, so for, for, it sounds like you, there's a potential that there could be some outdoor storage. Do you have, is, I think the board would, if there is going to be outdoor storage, I think the board would just like to know, like, kind of, is there a general area in the parking lot or the gravel parking area where you anticipate it to be stored? Just some general approximate dimensions. Are we talking about like a pipe rack?
Yeah, I would, I, I would say that if we did have something like that, it would be on, I don't know what line this is, between the building, the north side, between the building and the north side where that tree buffer is, we'd probably have like, where the drywall is, we'd probably have a pipe rack in there.
So just a comment for the board, I would just say, obviously, they're asking relief from like the 50-foot buffer along the north. Like, as I mentioned, it's residential buffer because it's residency zone. It is a commercial north, uh, use to the north. So, you know, if, if the board doesn't take issue with it being stored there, I would just ask if the storage area not be on top of the drywells, just so if, you know, it's a decent amount of stuff, we're not causing any issues for the drywalls with weight or, or surcharge or anything like that. And then I guess the question would just be for the board's perspective. I think looking at the aerial, there is some decent screening along the north side of that gravel parking area. Looking at the area or the aerials on Google Earth, it looks like there is some woods and vegetation there. You know, are any trees to be removed? Are we removing any buffering there? To the west, I think there is a proposed six-foot fence, and Mr. DeFalco indicated they could provide some evergreen shrubs to the west. I, I would just, my concern would be for the board, if there is any outdoor store, just making sure that it's appropriately screened from, you know, the road and then the properties to the north adjacent to it. So. And I'm sure Sherry might have some comments chiming in on that, on any trees to be removed, you know, you know, replanting it elsewhere in kind or, or something suitable. So I don't know if you want to chime in at all, Sherry?
Yeah, um, in my previous letter, I, I did ask about the existing trees. It does look like there's trees in the area where the building's going, potentially even where the expansion on the house is. I mean, there was a tree nearby. It's hard to say. But that was a question of mine, if there's any trees to be removed and, you know, providing calculations for it.
Yes. Okay, we can do that.
I mean, I, I don't expect any issues as far as replacement, since you already have, you know, probably more than plenty trees going back in, so that shouldn't be a problem. But just for clarification on what's coming out and, you know, and, and what's remaining within that lawn area, it's hard to tell.
Okay. My only recommendation, Mr. Chair, is, uh, if there's arches to be removed there and there's going to be outside storage, providing landscaping along the west side of the, of the six-foot-high fence to the northwest of the building, and then maybe just some additional minor plantings along the northernly property line, just to make sure that that's, you know, still screened from the, from the adjacent properties.
Charlie, let me ask you a question.
Yep.
If, if this was a commercial property, buttoned up to a commercial property, what, what would be? There, there's really no setback. Is there a buffer between the two?
No, so, but the ordinance is written in such a manner that it's commercial to residential use or zone. So tech, it's a technical requirement of the buffer. Obviously, it is a commercial property to the north or commercial use to the north. I assume Mr. Higgins will provide some testimony on, you know, why they're seeking relief of that, of that buffer. But yeah, if it was a commercial zone with a commercial use to the applicant's proposed commercial use, I, I don't know that the, the buffer would be required.
I, I just wanted a clarification on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can you put the plan back up?
You guys can, yeah.
Thank you.
Can we get, should we continue testifying then with the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we went over a number of employees, visitors to site. Do customers come to the site at all?
No.
Uh, but you basically go to their house to?
Yeah, I'll guard the house or site is, is how it's done. You do, you know, sales from there.
So the only anticipated site traffic then, we briefly discussed, would be some box trucks to make whatever deliveries is coming to the site, is that correct? No tractor trailers, anything like that? And the larger equipment gets delivered right to the site?
Right.
We talked about your vehicles. Why don't we go, they want some specific testimony. You had given me a list. Why don't we go through the list? You said there's two air compressors on trailers?
Yes.
You have a water truck?
Yes.
Two drill rigs?
Correct.
Two service trucks?
Yes.
Three trailers?
Uh, I think it, there's probably four trailers. Uh, I think it, there's probably four trailers.
Okay, four true.
Hey Todd?
Yeah.
Let me interrupt you real quick. Okay, on the drill, what we're talking about on the concrete slab would be mainly like the drill rigs. Uh, you know, I, Charlie, you could, could jump in. But mainly the drill rigs, the air compressors don't take up that much room unless they're heavy, you know, big CFM air compressors, but, you know, if they're just, you know, what, how many CFM are the compressors?
Uh, they're uh, one seventy-five.
Okay, so that's a small unit, so. You know, they could probably be stacked in line on, on, you know, on the the deal, or do you keep them inside?
Um, I, I don't know what we're gonna stack inside yet and, you know, um, as far as machine, anything we can keep inside, I'd like to keep inside. But it's a matter of what value of equipment and what we can fit in there, you know, with material storage.
Right. Wait, yeah, okay, you got the drill rig. Do you have any heavy equip, backhoes?
I have, yes, I have a backhoe and I have a, a bulldozer and a mini excavator for, you know, trenching and backfill.
Okay. So.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could jump in, uh, just looking at the schedule that they provided on sheet two, uh, what I would say, it looks like they've got two drills. Uh, they've got a water truck, uh, a dump truck, uh, backhoe, dozer, excavator. That's uh, seven pieces of equipment. Uh, I would say, you know, seven spaces, you know, for a concrete pad, you know, um, maybe at least a minimum of ten feet for each of those, so. Uh, you know, s- a seventy by twenty size pad might be adequate um, for those pieces of equipment. And then when you say the trailers that are listed on there, that's just a tr- like a trailer hitch, right?
Uh, the trailers are uh, box trailers and uh, tag-along equipment trailer, which would be, you know, just a flat trailer.
Yeah, so it's a hard bottom, you know, if you have anything on top of it, it's got a hard bottom.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so what I would say, Mr. Chair, like a seventy by twenty-foot concrete pad, I think would be sufficient based off of the equipment schedule that they provided.
And the applicant's agreeable to that?
That's, that's fine.
Um, the only other item I wanted to talk with you about, you had mentioned the maintenance and cleaning of the vehicles that happens off-site for the most part?
We don't do, I mean, I windshield fluid, minor, you know, tires, things like that. Um, it all goes to, B and K uh, does all our service, all our routine maintenance, oil changes. All that's done there, uh, service. The only other service is really in the field. If you have a, a drill or bulldozer, backhoe, whatever breakdown there, they have eight mobile service trucks. They come out and, and deal with them there, or it goes, if it's coming off a site, it'll go there, get service, come back to our shop and be staged to, you know, go out again.
Um, that's all I had of the applicant. Any questions from the board?
Uh, uh, Jim Moretti, I have a question, actually two. Notice on the drawing, you say you're relocating the dumpster. Where is that being relocated? I can't see it anywhere. Unless because the drawing is not?
It's moving over to the north.
Yes, yeah. It, it's to the right of where it says to be relocated.
It's not labeled, the existing one isn't labeled, it looks like, but they show, they show it on the south and if you look to the left, that's the same dumpster.
That's the same dumpster?
Yes.
It just moved.
Sherry, does that have to be uh, fenced in or anything?
I don't know. We'd like not to fence it in.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, sorry.
The ordinance does require a, a buffer around it, a five-foot tall buffer around it, so they do have it around two sides. Um, so, yeah, technically it's not fully compliant.
Okay. Mr. Chair, what I will say is, and I imagine if Jim was here, she would uh, say the same thing, is uh, commercial site plan applications, uh, the board is typically required, uh, at least as concrete masonry type of trash enclosure structure, if not split face block. Um, as you recall, we had the Better Road Associates application come through where their, you know, trash enclosures were all the way tucked back in the back of the site and I think the board um, still required it on that type of application, so. Um, I think uh, you know, some type of hard structure so that dumpsters aren't moving uh, and a- all throughout the site, I think would be warranted for, for this type of application.
Right, and um, as Jen's fill-in for the night, uh, we would definitely recommend a uh, masonry block trash enclosure around that dumpster.
I thought she would want that. Uh, one other question. The additional space being put on the house, the thirty-foot by, what was it, twenty-foot? You say it's not a bedroom, but what is it going to be used, something that large on the house? Is there any particular usage?
If you look at the house, it's a very small cape. And my client's basically building a, a great, what's what they would call it, a great room or a family room? And it's only seven hundred square feet that he's adding, it's not that big.
So what would that be, if it's not gonna be used for a bedroom, what would you use it for, like a kitchen? Will you put a kitchen?
No, no, what they, they call it a great room. Is it a combination like family room, living room? Maintenance room?
Just curious, that's all I, something that large and it's, you know, wasn't identified as anything. Okay.
No problem.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, I've listened to the engineering and the uh, uh, the operations and the owner's testimony. During our NOV, we noticed commercial vehicles were also being stored at the pole barn on lot sixteen oh three. I haven't heard anything about that. It's not really subject to this application. Can I confirm that no commercial operations are taking place on sixteen oh three?
Yeah. No, no commercial operations there. We moved anything we had over there. Uh, my dad subsequently is, he's retired as of last year.
So, so we've waited two years for this application from a zoning, uh, code compliance perspective? So if there's any vehicles there, that compliance has to be immediate. I mean, like this week.
There, there's nothing, there's nothing there as of uh, you know, today. There's nothing.
Okay.
There's been nothing there besides whatever, you know, he has for farm use. I think he's got a Kubota tractor, his truck, his camper. Um, but that's.
The way, the day we were out there was a, prob- probably thirty, forty-foot tall drill rig, so that's not there anymore.
No, it's all on sixteen oh two.
My next question is regarding lot fifteen oh two, which is up the road a little bit. About six, nine months ago, a driveway was installed. That driveway connects all the way from Squawkamie Elbrook Road to the back of sixteen oh three. Ultimately connects to the driveway that is being used as access through this application. Can I confirm that that driveway has no commercial use associated with this application in any way?
It does, that driveway uh, on that lot doesn't connect to anything. It just goes back into the lot.
So no commercial use through this application, right?
No, sir, no.
And the vehicles that are being sold from fifteen oh two, they will be removed and you can't use that site for selling your commercial vehicles?
Gotcha.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
That, that it, Matt?
That's it for me.
Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir, Paul.
So, uh, and Charlie?
That one is?
The applicant has referred to, you know, a, a number of different types of vehicles. I just want to confirm they're all rolling stock and there's no track vehicles. Cause if we have track vehicles, we're gonna run track vehicles on top of a concrete pad. That, that imposes a problem as well, over.
So I guess that would be a question for Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I know some track equipment, you can get rub- the, you know, the rubber track equipment. Um, when you're storing the equipment, is it on a trailer when it's on the concrete pad or is it unloaded off the trailer onto the concrete pad?
There's the excavator's rubber track. Uh, the dozer is a steel track. Um, it could be on a trailer, it could be uh, it could be on the pad.
Would you agree to a condition that the dozer's gotta be on a trailer when parked on a concrete pad, just so we don't have any issues with uh, you know, deterioration of the pad or anything like that?
Charlie, Charlie, let me step in real quick.
Okay.
Dozer, you, you just put, put a piece of wood down and you run it up on the concrete.
Right, we just.
That's the normal thing. We use planks. You know, e- even myself, whenever I unload a dozer off of a.
Can we do an either or as a condition?
Yeah, they, I, it doesn't have to be on a trailer. I, you know, because a lot of times you need the trailer. And if you're gonna park the dozer, the dozer is usually one thing, one piece of equipment that sits in your yard most of the time more than it does out on a job site. And, you know, to you, keep it on a trailer, you're gonna kill a trailer all the time for storage of a dozer. I, you know, we always just put planks down and run, you know, our excavators, dozers, whatever. You know, even unloading them on a, on a highway. We use planks to walk it off the trailer and then onto the job site. So you could store it on top of planks.
So I think what Todd was suggesting is an either or, so I would find that acceptable, Mr. Chair. Either on a trailer or a concrete pl- uh, wood planks, not directly on the concrete pad would be, would be acceptable.
Thank you.
That okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, any of the other board members? Mr. Moretti, sorry, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir, I've got all I need so far.
Mr. Chair, uh, just to, I want uh, either the applicant or Todd can maybe clarify. So sixteen oh three, you are proposing driveway access easement and landscape easement for lot sixteen oh two? Are you proposing any landscaping on that or is that intended to uh, that, you know, should the lot be sold sixteen oh three? You know, the applicant just can't go and remove all this vegetation and landscaping that exists there?
No, that, that's for sure, for sure.
Okay. So it's.
We, we have additional proposed landscaping on the south side as well. Um, on our plans that we gotta do. Closer to the building.
Okay, so that's for some landscaping that is going on lot sixteen oh three. And then also, I guess with that cover, like no removal of any existing vegetation with that easement? You know, on all the shared property line?
That's fine.
Okay. And then uh, for Mr. Mayor, so um, I guess the Fire Bureau had some questions regarding that existing driveway, you know, uh, suitability for uh, fire apparatus, you know, uh, they typically require a twenty-foot wide minimum width with thirteen-foot of clearance. Um, can you give us some indication on the makeup of the, of the driveway? How long it's existed? Has it had a lot of traffic over the years with the farm use on that lot where it's thoroughly compacted?
When that driveway was built, it was uh, built to the sub, the original three-lot subdivision. And it was uh, I forgot the apron dimensions, but the driveway was, I think, fire-coated at eighteen-foot wide. Uh, and it was excavated, I believe, eight inches and filled with uh, uh, DG, what is it, DGA, DGA mix, and then it was rolled. And then it's got uh, like a one-inch cap of bluestone on it. Uh, if it had to go uh, to twenty, um, I'm sure we could bring it to twenty. Yeah.
Yes, what, what I would say, Mr. Chair, is um, you know, maybe we can defer that as, should the board refer favorably to subject to approval by the Fire Bureau? I mean, looking at the site plan, I think at the western extent where the end of the asphalt apron from uh, Squawkamie Elbrook Road terminates, that's, the plan says they're at nineteen point two feet. Um, and I think there's some areas closer towards where it turned into the um, uh, gravel parking area where it's like twenty-four feet. So I mean, it's a real small difference from the twenty feet, at least from the dimensions provided. And then I would say, you know, s- subject to the Fire Bureau's review and approval. If it's been there and it's been in heavily compacted with DGA and gravel uh, surface course and has existed with, you know, farm equipment and similar type vehicles on top of that, I would say it's probably suitable for, you know, the type of equipment they're bringing in and out of there, but you know, obviously I would make it subject to the Fire Bureau signing off on it.
Mr. Cohen, is that okay with your, you and your client?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell?
I just have a question, um, for Mr. DeFaco on the septic tank and the well. Is there more than one septic tank and one well? And are they uh, more than a hundred feet apart?
The answer is yes, they are, there's two septic fields. One is new, one's proposed. And they are more than a hundred feet from the well.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any uh, further questions of uh, the applicant?
Mr. Martin? Miss?
I think he muted. I think he muted.
Do you need now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted just to confirm like the business hours that you would uh, stay, uh, was on testimony for your business?
Uh, se- seven-thirty to four-thirty is our standard day.
Okay, would you be working on a Saturday if you got backed up with work?
Um, yeah, it's possible.
Okay, but nothing on Sunday?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, good. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Mr. Cantor?
No questions.
Mr. Roscoe?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, we, you had none. Uh, Mr. Seiya, any further? Okay. Moretti, Mr. Moretti?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
No more.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify, I just wanted, there's a couple of other waivers that I just wanna put it on the record, just so it, so it's clear, so. Um, they do require the waiver of curving and sidewalk along the property frontage. I will say, looking at the site aerials and adjacent properties, there aren't any curb or sidewalks in the immediate vicinity, so um, I wouldn't take exception to that should the board grant that waiver and obviously, as you know, the board has repealed the uh, contribution to the Sidewalk Trust Fund. Uh, so that would not be required. Um, also the parking area, the ordinance requires they gotta be curbed. Um, for this instance, obviously, since the board's not requiring the entirety to be uh, paved with asphalt, uh, I wouldn't be in favor of putting in curb because then we're channelizing water and changing drainage pa- drainage patterns and things like that. Um, so I would not take any exception to that. Uh, and then just as far as um, I guess for uh, the applicant indicated, obviously, there's some minor deliveries, box trucks are smaller. There isn't really a loading area shown on the plans, Todd. Um, obviously, you've got a pretty large gravel area. I mean, are they just pulling in, dropping off stuff and doing a quick uh, K turn to get out of there, or is there any like anticipated, like designated area for, for loading?
I mean, there, there's really not a designated loading area. There would really be no need for one with the frequency of uh, of deliveries that they get.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I wouldn't really take exception to that. Um, I think they've, they've got a pretty good decent size, especially if they're removing the tree in the middle and making that all gravel. I think there's a lot of room to, to, to make a turning movement there. And then the last one, um, Todd, there's no gates or anything proposed to the site where Fire Bureau would need a Knox box or anything?
I saw that, there was a comment to that. I, I, I think we had a gate on the main driveway.
Yeah, there is. I don't think it's ever been closed.
It's never locked, but if the fire department, fire department approval needs a lockbox, it would be absolutely good.
Yeah, I would just say for the driveway at sixteen oh three, definitely provide that. And then the last thing I would just say is, you know, for the board's record, when that access easement gets finalized, the driveway and the landscaping, I'd like to see it filed by deed, obviously, and then copy of that for, you know, Bronz and my uh, you know, review and record. Um, I don't, we don't want, we just wanna make sure it's not just a verbal agreement. Obviously, a lot of ownership changes. We wanna make sure that that is something that's uh, permanent and in perpetuity.
Yeah, it'd be filed access easement by deed and perpetuity with a description.
It's good for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Christine?
Um.
We're ready for Mr. Higgins yet?
Yes, I'm, I'm waiting to hear the uh, planning testimony.
No, but do you have any further comments or questions of any of the witnesses so far?
I think Charlie covered uh, pretty much every uh, comment I would have had about the site-specific thing.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, you wanna? Okay, Mr. Cohen, you wanna move forward?
I do, uh, at this time, um, there he is, Mr. Higgins. Jim, can you hear us or are you muted?
You're muted, Jim.
Hold on, Jim, you're muted.
There we go. I apologize, I just had to put my secretary in the garage, she was barking.
No, no problem, man.
That's why I'm in the garage house.
I don't feel allowed to say that even anymore. Uh, Jim, would you please put your, uh, credentials on the record as a professional planner for the board?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner. I've been licensed for about forty-two years. I've testified before this board on numerous occasions as an expert in the field of planning. I've testified before well over two hundred boards throughout the state, represented at least ten municipalities as an expert in the field of planning, and also been, uh, accepted as an expert in the field of planning by superior courts in five, in five counties, as well as recognized by the State Supreme Court as an expert in the field of planning.
Education?
I've, have a bachelor of science degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Higgins, you're obviously familiar with the project that's been put before the board tonight. You're familiar with the, the variances that the applicant has requested and a couple of the, um, C variances as well. Would you please direct your testimony with regard to the D variance first on the record and then we can go from there?
Surely, I, I reviewed the application, I reviewed the expert reports, I visited the site on several occasions, I am familiar with the area. Uh, first of all, with regard to the D variances, the master plan reexamination in November two thousand nineteen, I had comprehensive goals and comprehensive objectives. Among the comprehensive goals were to encourage the establish, establishment of policies, codes, and standards that promotes the use of sustainable development practices, including but not necessarily limited to infrastructure, public and private buildings, open space and recreation, local waste, and recycling, among other things. It also has a comprehensive goal to continually improve the sustainability profile at the township. And comprehensive objectives, one of those is to promote energy efficiency, conservation, and increased use of renewable energy to reduce waste and increase recycling, to reduce the use of hazardous materials and eliminate toxic substances, and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to plan for mitigating the effects of climate change. So I think those are goals and objectives that are pertinent to this application. In addition, more, even more pertinent is that that reexamination report recommended that this specific area, including the subject site as, and, uh, lot sixteen oh three, as well as, uh, thirteen other sites in this area, be redesignated to include an SED light overlay zoning. And basically what the master plan says, what the reexamination report says, is to create an SED light overlay zoning of the northwestern side of Squankham Yellowbrook Road from Southard Avenue to the parcel opposite of Duke Drive. The overlay of the SED light over, and this is awkward wording, but this is exactly what the reexamination report says. Says the overlay of the SED light over the underlying AR three, I'm sorry, ARE two district is to encourage light industrial development in an area that already, that is already developed with several industrial properties ranging from warehouses to light manufacturing businesses. This area was previously zoned industrial in the nineteen nineties, many of these properties were conforming at the time and have become nonconforming since the zone changed to the ARA, or ARE two. This will eliminate the nonconformities and connect to the existing SED zoning which stretches around the border with Farmingdale. By making the SED light zoning overlay, it will, it will not remove the residential development rights of the existing properties. So basically, the reexamination report recommend, recognizes the mixed use character of this area of the township and recommends that it continue to be a mixed use character. And with, with an emphasis on increasing, encouraging additional light industrial use in the area. The zoning of this area hasn't been trans, the, the recommended overlay zoning in the, uh, reexamination report has yet to be translated into a zoning ordinance amendment, but it's been less than a year since that reexamination report was adopted. So that's not, that's not unusual. With regard to the D variance, uh, D variances as far as the D one variance, the first thing is to demonstrate that the site is particularly suited for the use. And in this instance, again, when you look at the reexamination report, the reexamination court recommends that this site and the adjacent site, as well as thirteen other sites in the area, be included within an over SED light over, overlay district. So I think really the proposed use of a portion of this site for a light industrial use as is being proposed, I don't think is inconsistent with your master plan reexamination. And I think it really, that demonstrates that the use is particularly suited for this type of use. Particularly when the, uh, the reexamination also recommends a mixed use of residential and, uh, and light industrial uses in the area, and the use of the site as a mixed use, I think, is a microcosm of, of that recommendation. The proposed use, a geothermal well drilling business or geothermal business is a use, I think, that directly promotes energy efficiency and directly advances the purpose, the goals and objectives of the master plan uh, with regard to those, those issues. So I think that the general welfare is advanced because, because of the fact that it advances those goals and objectives. In addition, it advances goals and objectives of the municipal land use law, including to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And clearly, by providing a use in an area where the reexamination report recommends an increase in light industrial uses and a use that will provide, will improve the sustainability of, of the, uh, the township, I think, is, is a very good thing and advances that purpose. In addition, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Again, this is an appropriate location for a light industrial use and for a mix of light industrial and residential use, uses. And then also to promote the utilization of renewable energy resources, which, again, this application does do. And it's, it's really geared specifically towards that with the nature, with the nature of this use that's being proposed. I think the mixed use nature of the site, the fact that there are two separate uses on the site, is consistent with the master plan proposals that the area continue to be a mix of industrial and residential uses. And in fact, the, uh, prohibition of two principal uses on the site and, uh, in the ordinance is really geared towards not having two resi- multiple residential uses on the site. And this isn't the case here. You have residential use and then you have a industrial use that utilizes a totally different portion of the site, uh, and the site can accommodate these two uses, clearly, when you look at the plan. I don't think there's any substantial detriment to the granting of the use variances. Uh, with regard to the impact on surrounding properties, you have an industrial use to the immediate, I think that's the west. You have the driveway that's accessing the site to the immediate east. And you have the, uh, the farm use with resident, single family residents on it to the, uh, to the, and I'm getting my north, southeast, and west, but anyway, to the, to the back of the site. And with, with the way that farming use is, is a, is set up on that site was the Christmas tree, uh, growing. It's more than fifty feet away from the site, which I'll get into the buffers in a minute. But I don't think there's any adverse impact on your surrounding properties. With regard to being inconsistent with the zone plan, I think it's more consistent with what is projected for this area than the current zoning of the site. Because clearly, the master plan reexamination recommends that this area be a mix of industrial and residential uses, and that's what's being proposed on the site. As I said, I think it's a microcosm of the overall zone, which, but the zone plan proposes for the area. So I don't see any substantial negative impact, particularly since what's being proposed on the site. The industry, light industrial portion is not visible from the street, and it will be buffered in terms of landscaping, maybe not the fifty foot buffer, but it will be, uh, screened with landscaping from surrounding properties. So it'll have minimal impact on the surrounding properties. The buffer variances are interesting. There are a number of variances that are, uh, related to the required buffers, both the buffer themselves and also the setbacks from the buffers. And quite frankly, when you look at the intent of the buffering requirements in the ordinance, it's to protect with regard to the agricultural uses, is to protect the farming use that surrounds the site. And clearly, in this instance, the farming use doesn't directly affect the site. You have the driveway, uh, that, that accesses from Yellowbrook, Squankham Yellowbrook Road, and that really is not in it, that's not an agricultural use, that's a driveway. And it's eighty feet wide, uh, so there's no impact of this use on that driveway in terms of having an adverse impact. So there's no need for a buffer on that side of the property. You have the residential use, uh, to the, and let me pull the site plan up a minute, just so I can remember which, yeah, to the east of the site. And again, the driveway extends well beyond fifty feet from the back of the site, except for one corner. And that area has a permanent landscape, landscaping in there that's gonna provide separation between this use and the agricultural use on that side. So I don't see any need for a buffer on the subject site that, that, uh, would buffer the agricultural use. There's just no point to it. And then you have on the, uh, north side of the site, you have an industrial use, and there's no need to buffer industrial from industrial. So I don't think the, the buffer variances are, are appropriate in this instance. I don't think there's any need for them. And it provides for a better use of the site, a more efficient use of the site if those buffers aren't enforced. So when I look at, at all of this, I, I think that the, the D variances can be granted. I think they're appropriate. I think there's compelling special reasons for the granting of the variances. And as far as the C variances go, again, I don't think there's any substantial negative impact to those variances. I think, in fact, to, to impose the buffer requirements on this, this site, I think, would have an adverse impact on the use of the site. So when I look at that, I think that C variances can also be granted.
Mr. Higgins, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Lot, lot sixteen oh three.
Yes.
What's the Q farm, correct?
That is what?
A Q farm, correct?
You for, that's right.
Okay, my question is, how many acres is lot sixteen oh three?
The exact acreage, I don't know.
Mr. Cohen, do you know that question?
Yeah, thirteen point sixty-seven. Fourteen point six seven.
Okay, so i- if you take that easement out of that, you still qualify under the six acre, correct?
That's, that's correct.
All I wanted to ask.
Okay.
Okay, go right ahead.
No, I'm done.
Um, Mr. Higgins, I have, um, a question for you. I find it very difficult to understand, uh, how the site is particularly suited, uh, for this, for these uses, uh, given the fact that the site is unable to accommodate, uh, both uses and the driveway for the uses. Uh, you know, you are, uh, requesting, requiring an access easement from the neighboring site. Um, so I'd like you to maybe, uh, provide some more testimony on that and how you think, um, this site accommodates both those.
I think actually, the fact that you do have that driveway on sixteen oh three that can access the rear of the site makes this site more particularly suited for the use. I think that's, that's an element of this application, I think is very important to the application. I think it adds to the particular suitability of the site. And the fact that the master plan not only recommends that this area be designated with an overlay for light industrial use, but that it encourages the expansion of the area with light industrial use, also goes to the particular suitability. I have absolutely no problem at all with, with that situation and with stating that this site is particularly suited for the use. And you also have the fact that the use itself is, while it may not be inherently beneficial, it is a use that clearly goes towards advancing the purposes and the goals of your master plan.
You, you're, there you go.
Oh, um, I also, uh, take some issue with, uh, the fact that the, but you don't think the buffers are required? I think, um, especially the buffer to the east of the property because that is a buffer against a residential use and a farm qualified property in, um, you know, a residential zone, residential agricultural zone. Uh, there, from the aerial that was, uh, shown earlier, there, there is some, um, agricultural use in that area. I think that, uh, the buffer should certainly be considered. Um, it's, and the intention of the buffers is really to separate, you know, the farming and residential uses from the, uh, commercial uses. So I don't, I don't see how those buffers are not necessary.
I, I respectfully disagree. In this case, when you, especially when you look at the east side of the property, the fact is you have substant- for the, the applicant controls both properties. They're not under the same ownership, but he has control. So he can set up. That, do you please let me finish? Please? He has control, he can establish a fifty foot buffer easement on lot sixteen oh three that provides the necessary buffer. The purpose of the buffer is not to separate tax lots. The purpose of the buffer is to separate a non-residential use from a residential use and from an agricultural use. You have sufficient room on sixteen oh three to provide that buffer and to meet the intent of the ordinance. And it doesn't make sense to require that fifty feet on sixteen oh two when it can be provided on sixteen oh three and meet the intent of the ordinance.
May, may I interject real quick? So you're, you're telling me that's gonna be a landscape easement for that fifty foot buffer, correct?
That's correct.
Christine, do you understand that?
So, all along the, uh, like, the southern and eastern, uh, border of, uh, lot sixteen oh three and sixteen oh two will be a fifty foot landscaped buffer, that's what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that, and I didn't say that.
No.
What I said is on the eastern side, there will be a fifty foot buffer, with the exception of the small area where the existing driveway does cut through that buffer area. There's a very small area where there's an existing driveway, and the only purpose there of that driveway is to act, provide, provide access to the residential use. As far as the southern border of the site, the southern border of the site's a driveway. There's absolutely no reason to provide a fifty foot buffer from a driveway. There's no agricultural use along that entire fif- it's actually an eighty-three foot wide, four hundred and fifty-eight foot long flagpole, if you wanna call it that, on the flag lot. There's no, there's no agricultural use there, there's no residential use there, and the closest residence is over eighty feet away. So you have that driveway that exists, has existed for years and has been used for years. So there's no reason for a fifty foot buffer there, and it's very unreasonable to expect that there should be one there.
Well, Mr. Higgins, sixteen oh four, is that agriculture or is that just a residence?
Sixteen oh four is. It's my understanding that that's a residence.
That, that's not a Q farm, is it?
I do not know for sure.
Because that, because that driveway, that is a deeded access. And now you're saying you're gonna give a fifty foot easement, a deeded easement for the farmland buffer on sixteen oh three, correct?
Yes.
You understand that, Christine? Is, they're gonna give it, just like they're gonna do a deeded easement for the driveway access, they're gonna give it, sixteen oh three is gonna get a deeded fifty foot buffer across the north or the east side that covers the farmland buffer, correct?
I think they're just giving the fifty foot along, like, the rear of the property, not along the side.
They don't have to on the side.
That's correct.
That's not a farmland, there, there's no farmland there on the side, it's just the back of the property now. They're giving you an easement for the driveway going through. That easement for that driveway doesn't touch farmland except in the back. The farmland is only sixteen oh three in the rear. There's not a farm on the right side, on sixteen oh four is not a farm. There's not a farm on the right side, on sixteen oh four is not a farm.
Okay.
You, you follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
They, they're giving, they're going to suffice the board. Honestly, that's the only way I'd vote for it myself, because I'd never voted for a farmland encroachment. They're going to give that fifty foot on the rear side. So that should address the farmland buffer.
Wendell, if I could jump in, I think just what Christine is getting at is that normally when we have a farmland buffer situation, it goes around the entire property. If the house is up front, we don't usually designate the portion next to the house not to have a buffer. So I think what Christine is trying to get at is the fact that it's not going to go right around. And the way the ordinance reads, that might need relief still.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
And this, this is true, I don't disagree the fact that relief is necessary. What I'm saying is it's technical relief, this is a unique situation, it's not a typical situation.
Right. Does that answer your question, Christine? But we are getting a farmland buffer on the rear of the property.
Yes, it answers my question, thank you.
Okay, do you have any further questions of Mr. Higgins?
Not at this time.
Okay, any of the board members have any questions of Mr. Higgins? Start with you, Mr. Alom.
No, I don't, he covered it pretty good.
Mr. Martin?
No, I do not.
Mr. Cantor?
No, I do not.
Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Roscoe?
Oh.
Mr. Seiya?
Ah. I don't have as much, any questions per se. I'd like to hear more about the overall C variances again, as they pertain to the north, east, south, and west. I, I, it's not clear in my mind, Wendell.
Okay. Mr. Higgins?
Okay, yeah, surely, okay, well, we'll do the east first, because that's the, the one where the applicant is proposing to put an easement there that'll provide the, the buffer on the east side of the property between the, uh, between sixteen oh two and the Q agricultural property to the east and the residential property to the east. And again, the agricultural use and the residential use are substantially to the east of the subject site. So putting that buffer on sixteen oh three will not frustrate the ordinance. And it's consistent with the intent of the ordinance, which is to provide a separation between any, any non-agricultural and non-residential use and the agricultural and residential use. So that buffer will be in place and those uses will be protected. As far as the north side goes, there is an industrial use there now. And that industrial use directly abuts, the parking lot directly abuts the property line on the subject site. So that to put an industrial use next to an industrial use, you don't need a buffer. With regard to the, uh, south side of the site, where you have the existing driveway that comes in through the eighty-three foot wide access of lot sixteen oh three to the rear of the site, what's being proposed to access the rear of sixteen oh two also. Again, you have an existing driveway there that's not going to change unless it's widened a little bit for purposes to provide a little bit better access if the, uh, if the board so requires that. But you don't have a farmland use to the further south of that, you have a residential use. And you do have eighty-three feet between the two, between that property line and the subject site, the activity on the subject site. And again, all you do have there is the existing driveway. And with very little use of that driveway in terms of the industrial uses being proposed, it's going to be very minimal traffic going in and out of the site, as far as that goes. So there's really no need for a fifty foot buffer on the subject site or on, on sixteen oh three, did about sixteen oh four, that, that really would be necessary at this point in time. There's no substantial negative impact.
But you still need a C variant, you still need.
Need the variance, yeah, technically variance is necessary, very clearly.
And that will be an easement.
That will be an easement, yes. It'll be easements for both access and to maintain the lands, existing landscaping and, and the proposed landscaping.
So sixteen oh three is not owned by the applicant?
Yeah.
But, but yet.
Sixteen oh three is owned by one of the applicants personally. It's not owned by Brian Mayer, it's owned by Chris Mayer.
Okay.
So is, are they both listed as the applicant, Todd, in the application?
I think we technically listed Chris as the, uh, Brian originally, because we didn't have sixteen oh three listed as the, one of the applicant. But then Ron Tropoli called me up and said, we really need to include that in the application, because you have the easement on that lot, that lot really is included. So technically, both lots are included in the application, and each brother owns one of the lot. And they're partners in the well drilling, geothermal.
Okay, I just want to make that clear, so it was noticed for both, both lots?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I just want to clarify, I think Mr. Higgins alluded to sixteen oh four to the south, not having a Q farm use to it. Uh, when I look at the certified property list on the, um, first page of the cover sheet, lot sixteen oh four is identified as a Q farm.
Yes, I stand corrected.
I believe, uh, Charles, I'm looking at the map now, the, the front portion of that property has a residence with a pool along the eighty-three foot wide driveway portion of the lot. And I believe the back, uh, my client believes that the gentleman has a, uh, what do you call a, uh, wood.
Wood law.
Woodlands plan for the back part of that lot, so get the Q farm.
Do you know how many years that Woodlands been in, in effect?
Oh, at least since two thousand and four.
He's lived there since two thousand and four, they all bought the property around the same time.
I, I think you need to, I'll leave that up to Sherry to answer that. But I think a Woodlands management under that is, is only good for X amount of years.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure they're good for ten years at a clip, but you have to keep, you know, updating them.
Yeah, but he, no, I, I think it, the stewardship is only good for ten years. I don't think it's good, you, you, Woodlands, Woodlands manage, or Woodlands deal is only good for ten years, you can't keep renewing it another ten years. It's only good for X amount of years and not renewable. Because one, once you reach to a certain point of stewardship, you're not supposed to do nothing else with the property under that. So, you know.
I think, Wendell, I'm, I'm pretty sure they can renew, I've worked on those plans before.
But you have to renew every three years. So every two or three years, you have to renew that. Every year, you have to have an update plan. But it's only good for ten years. I, I know mine was, and then it went away. You know, on, on the wood, Woodlands parts of my property, that went away. So, you know, I think that's worth looking into. But if that's a Q farm, then we, you know, you're going to need relief, you know, in that, that eighty foot area.
So what I would say, Mr. Chair, if, uh, you know, they're getting an access easement first from sixteen oh three, which is common lot ownership, that's, was primarily, uh, you know, a driveway for the Q farm, um, for that residential Q farm use. Now it's, uh, it may have been operating as being used by the commercial, you know, geothermal well drilling use in the past, albeit without approvals. Now they're coming to seek to validate that the lot to the south is listed as a Q farm, it is a residential property. You know, um, obviously to require the full fifty foot along the southern, southern side of lot sixteen oh three, you know, would take up most of the driveway. Perhaps if the board were concerned with the fifty foot buffer there, maybe additional landscaping could be proposed along that south property line, you know, to provide, you know, a landscape buffer, um, albeit not the fifty foot required by the ordinance, but some additional, you know, buffering measures in case, um, you know, there are any, are any concerns to that property to the south, whether it be Q farm and residential or just a residential by itself. Um, and then I would just ask Matt, um, obviously, this is a code enforcement case. Is he aware of any, you know, complaints from any of the adjoining property owners regarding hours of operation, intensity of the use, or anything of that nature?
No, none.
Yeah, so, so what I would say, if the board's going to look favorably on granting relief for those buffers, um, I would say, you know, maybe some additional landscaping would be warranted along that southerly property line, you know, subject to any, you know, approvals by Sherry regarding to the suitability of the plantings.
Also, we, we'll see who comes up in the public, you know.
Yeah, because that Woodlands use is way in the back, it's way past, you know, the residence even on, on sixteen oh three.
I, I, I understand that, Todd, but if it's a Q farm, that's the whole property. You know, it, it, it's considered the whole property though, that's, there, there's X amount.
I don't think it's the whole property, Wendell, I think the front acre or two is taxed with the house and the balance is taxed with the Woodland.
Well, I think they give you an acre for the house. You subtract the, you know, an acre for the house and then the rest is, goes under the Q farm. Six acres and then you have to have X amount over six acres, you know, of income per acre over.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify what, um, Charlie had requested.
Yes.
Were you asking Charlie for additional landscaping along the dirt drive, along that area of the property?
Sorry, I was muted there for a half second. No, so, uh, the, the proposed access easement on lot sixteen oh three, that existing gravel driveway, you know, it varies from nineteen point two to twenty-four foot wide to the south of that to lot sixteen oh four, maybe some additional landscaping can be proposed. Obviously, we're saying that two lots, even though they're not common ownership, they are family members. Um, the lot to the south of that is residential, possibly a Q farm, and it's a different owner. Um, you know, I think some buffering there might be, you know, appropriate. And, and, you know, the board can weigh that based on maybe any comments or, or questions from any public members.
Okay.
Charlie, also, if you look at that area that we submitted in the very beginning, we looked at, you can, if you throw that back up, uh, Matt, you could see the, uh, it's fairly heavily buffered back there.
Zoom in on that.
If you go back, yeah, look at the zone, the buffer by the pool over there.
So, so my question would be, you know, on the plan we're just showing a wood line, are the plantings actually on sixteen oh three, are they on the neighbor's property? Um, if it's on the neighbor's property, you know.
No, they're on sixteen oh three, they were planted by my client and they're approximately twelve feet tall already.
Okay, so like I said, my, my, it's just a recommendation or suggestion that I made. It's for the board to weigh and consider that. Um, I would certainly, you know, advise them to maybe listen to any concerns that the public have regarding that. And it's, it's just something to consider.
Hey, Mr., Mr. Hughes, do you have any questions of Mr. Higgins?
I do not, I had, uh, you know, the real estate broker in me kind of was thinking about the easement and the farmland buffer, but I think I have it clear in my head now that that would be part, farmland buffer would be part of the easement given to that lot. So I, I think my questions are good.
Mr. Moretti?
No questions.
Mr. Roscoe? I think I asked you once, but.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
One last quick item, uh, the board is not looking for any conservation easement here, right?
No.
Thank you, Ron, could you just make sure that's accurate? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I believe that concludes our testimony. Uh, might be a good idea if you want to open the public at this point, and then we could finish up.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make one last comment, um, uh, there was a, uh, letter issued by the Moth County Plan Board, obviously. Swanscombe Millbrook Road is a county road. There was some informational requirements that they requested, you know, be provided on the plans. I just ask, uh, obviously, the approval is subject to their approval, but any requirements that they require on their updated plans just be reflected on, uh, any, you know, revised plans that board, should the board have a favor about the application.
Yeah, we have that reported, and that, that's, uh, that's no problem.
There, there's not going to be any site signage, correct, Todd?
I'm sorry?
No site signage, other than private driveway.
No site signage.
Other than the private driveway to keep.
Other than what Charles recommended, yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the professionals or comments from any of the witnesses? Okay, can I have a motion to open the public?
I'll make a motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Motion, Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Roscoe, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public. I'm going to turn it over to Eileen and Matt.
Thank you. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment or ask questions about this application, please use the raise your hand feature and the moderator will call upon you. Thank you. I'm not seeing any members of the public on the call.
Hey, do you want to give it a few more seconds or?
I can make one more announcement, if there's any member of the public wishing to speak on this application, please use the raise your hand feature so the moderator can bring you into the meeting. Thank you.
Hey, can I have a motion to close public?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, or what's it?
That's it.
And then my, Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Who seconded that, Mr. Cantor?
We're ready.
We're ready, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr. Cohen, you want to do a sum, summary here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, very, very briefly, um, I think Mr. Higgins laid out very clearly the reasoning for the use variance and, and the other variances. I think we discussed the buffers. Uh, I think my client has shown, um, a willingness to comply with the recommendations of your professionals. Uh, there wasn't anything, I believe, that was thrown out there that we didn't agree to. Um, this is a family-run business for many, many years that serves the public in a variety of ways and, and even has a green energy feature to it. Um, I believe the reasoning and everything has been laid out clearly. And I would request that the application be granted with the conditions that have been agreed to this evening by my client.
Hey, any further from the professionals?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, so obviously, uh, I made a comment about possible additional buffering on the south side. Uh, obviously, we didn't hear any comments from the public and Matt Howard indicated he isn't aware of any complaints from any of the adjoiners. So, uh, you know, it's up to you guys to weigh that. Uh, my recommendation would be anytime we add some addition, additional buffering, it's a good thing. Uh, but it didn't really sound like there was any concerns from adjoining property owners. So I'll leave it up to you guys to, to weigh that.
Sherry, I, I have a question. Um, does the applicant have any issue to meet with Sherry on site and kind of look at that buffer along that south side? And if.
Sherry's really a tough cookie and she makes us very nervous, I'd like to have a police escort. No, there'd be, uh, I don't think we'd have, again, I, I, based on Charles' comments, I mean, we're talking about a very, very limited area at the end of where the driveway curves as to whether or not you would put, um, any plantings there at all. There are trees there at the end of the buffers that were planted. I mean, if Sherry feels a meeting in the field is necessary, we could do that. I'm thinking maybe Aaron Rich. I'm thinking maybe her and Rich could work that out on the phone.
Well, my, my whole thing is, is if there's not four-season trees there, you know, and you've got trees, it's gonna defoliate during the winter time. Sheri might be able to pick that up and if we need to put a few more trees in there, you know, does the applicant have a problem doing that?
Uh, no, we'd be happy to meet with Sheri.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr., Matt, do you want to go ahead?
However you want to go, Glenn, I'm happy as a what.
I'm gonna alternate tonight, I think, so I don't know if I can make a motion.
Uh, you're an alternate?
I believe so.
Yes, he is.
Okay, yeah, I need a full board member.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
That we accept this proposal with all necessary changes that Charlie mentioned, that Sheri's gonna go out to the field and check on. If all these things are met, and I think we can move further along with this.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would like to add to Mr. Moretti and mention the residential driveway signage, just to clarify things on the road. The lighting relief to add the architectural interest on the facade of the building where necessary. The relief for the pavement, but we also need to get the, the concrete area for the heavy equipment. Having a spill kit on hand would be great, storage, not to be placed over the dry well and also to work with Sheri on the trees, on the couple of different items that we did mention, especially like the last one where the curve is. Adding the dumpster enclosure and with the steel track vehicles either going on wood planks or to remain on, on a trailer. I would like to make a second for Mr. Moretti's motion to approve.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Moretti, seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Saya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yeah, I wanted to add a few more findings of facts. Just, this is gonna be a deeded drive access. It's gonna be, as testimony was put on, on the record, it's gonna be a deeded and it's also gonna have a deeded farmland buffer in the rear from 1603 of the 50-foot. And I don't vote on the farmland buffers, but this one, you know, I, I think you made all opportunities. I think having that deeded access driveway, 85 feet there with the 20-foot driveway is still giving you 60 feet, you know, unused landscaped area to buffer the Q farm to the south. So my vote is yes also.
Motion carries.
Hey, good luck.
Thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. I appreciate the efforts.
Yes, sir, thank you. And at this time, the board's gonna take a 10-minute break. I think everybody probably gonna.
Yeah, I think we're ready.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna be muted, but just so, any member of the public, the board's gonna take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 10 o'clock. Thank you. The zoning board will now reconvene?
Okay, case number BA 1926 Oakland Road LLC. Use variance preliminary and final ma, final major site plan. Application Oakland Road LLC is applicant in MRW Properties LLC Lot, I don't understand what that parentheses is.
There's two different owners. One owns one, one lot and one owns the other.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Lot 23 in Oakland 64, 641 LLC Lot 24 is owner seeking use variance preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a two-story, 14,607-square-foot office building with 49 proposed parking spaces, a four-foot-wide concrete walkway around the office building with a handicap ramp in the front west side of the building, landscaping, lighting, stormwater management facilities, home premises known as Block 42, Lot 23, 24 Oakland Road. Expiration date, November 20th, 2020. Mr. Cohen?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Todd Cohen, attorney for the applicant, Oakland Road LLC. I just wanted to touch base with the board. I mean, we have a rather long application. We have four witnesses. I noticed the hour is already after 10 o'clock. I don't know how late you're gonna hang out.
I feel around 10:30. I, I don't want to go much past.
If that's the case and we only have 20 minutes, I mean, I'd prefer to run the case at, at one time if we could, you know, adjourn it to a date that's in the near future.
Okay.
Just for continuity purposes and witness, you know, availability and stuff like that.
Mr. Tropley? Eileen?
My agendas do not look pretty. I have three applications scheduled for October 5th. One is a sign variance. One is for an undersized lot with a septic and another one is for concrete pillars in the front yard for a bulk variance. Uh.
What do, what do you think on the?
I don't know if we could fit that in with all that or.
Charlie?
It's probably your best bet right now. Otherwise, you're looking at probably November 30th.
I mean, they sound very minor, those applications. I mean, I get that.
They, they are kind of minor and you would go before them. So it's really up to the board and we can always move one of those minor ones to another date if we have to, so.
Charlie, how, how long do you think it's gonna take on those?
So, um, I might make a quick suggestion and I've already been in some correspondence with the applicant's traffic professional. I think, just to give a little background and Ron, you can cut me off if I'm saying anything that's, that's not factually accurate. I think this was a prior application before the board. There was a denial. There were some litigation and the applicant came back to the board with a revised plan that kind of was a meet-in-the-middle kind of situation. The application was subsequently approved for a towing company. Their current proposed site plan and, you know, I'm assuming Mr. Geller would provide some testimony to this if, if they were going to go ahead with tonight is very similar to that prior approval. I had some concerns regarding stormwater management. They subsequently expanded their, their stormwater management basin. The parking, I believe, and site configuration is very similar to what was previously proposed. The major change in the site is it's going from the towing use to now two-story office, which from my perspective is a more intensive traffic generator than the previously proposed towing company as, at least in the terms of like AM and PM trips from the site. And one of the concerns, and it's, and it's in my letter, was possible queuing on Oakland Road, the approach coming westbound to Lakewood Farmingdale Road. And then also, if you're on Lakewood Farmingdale Road and the northbound travel lane, making a right onto the site, sorry, onto Oakland Road and then a quick left onto the site. Can I share my screen? Matt and Eileen?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's not the site plan, but I'll show Google Earth real quickly. Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Google Earth. So the site is where I'm showing my cursor right here. It's right to the north of a, I believe it's a JCPN L BPU easement, which we had a, an application coming for approving some of the monopoles here. But there's this old stub of Oakland Road years ago. Oakland Road used to go straight through here. I believe it was maybe the early 90s. The county came in and did some interchange improvements. They reconfigured west, the west portion of Oakland Road coming into 547 and then they also reconfigured the eastern portion of Oakland Road coming into 547. But there's still this remnants of Oakland Road, which is still a public right-of-way, which the site is proposed to be accessed off of. My concern was one queuing in this westbound lane, building up and blocking the old portion of Oakland Road, which the site is accessed from. Like I said, coming northbound on 547, you're making a right-hand turn. There's not a lot of site distance coming around the turn here, trying to make a left onto the old remnants of Oakland Road, which the site is located. My recommendation, I think it would be really helpful from a traffic perspective, is for their, their traffic professionals, maybe look at some additional striping and signage. I've seen at some really busy intersections where you can do like X-out pavement striping so that it, it's clearly delineated that there should not be any blocking of the intersection there. And then my recommendation would be to sit down with the township engineering department and the traffic safety officer and just making sure that that is something that the township would be amenable to from a traffic safety perspective. And I think that might ease some of the traffic questions that I have and the board may have when the applicant returns to the board.
Great, Charlie, how long do you think the applications we have in October? How, those three applications, how long do you think it's gonna take to get through those?
Eileen, can you remind me what the three applications were? I think you're muted. I'm sorry.
Bronco developers, which is a single-family dwelling on an undersized lot. Starbucks sign variance and Jose Hernandez for the pillars in the front yard.
So I could see the, the first one taking just a little bit of time because it's a small lot with a septic system. The Starbucks is an existing site and I think they, they're just asking for variance relief to add two additional signs to the building. I don't foresee that taking a lot. And then the last one, Mr. Hernandez, that one could go relatively quick. It, it, it's a tough one. The applicant has pillars in their front yard. Technically, it's in the right-of-way. You know, I think the end outcome is, you know, you know, the applicant may need to be required to move those obviously out of the right-of-way. So I think it, you know, it's a pretty cut and dry on what needs to happen for that, but obviously, we still have to go through all the formalities of the application.
But I mean, we could put, Todd's case is gonna go first. It was carried there, so if one of them has to get bumped, they get bumped.
Yeah, so what I would say is, Todd, the, what I mentioned with the traffic is gonna be my big question and concern. If we can work out some striping and signage with the township in advance of that hearing, I think that would go a long way from my perspective of traffic speeding along the application. Like I said, the majority of the site, other than the change in use, is very similar to what was previously proposed and approved.
Okay, also, will that, will that require a septic?
Yes.
Will it require what?
A septic.
Before, yes, it will. But before we get to the septic, can I, are we, are we? Oh, is this case open? Like, can I talk to my traffic?
Yes, no. Wait, I'm trying to figure out where to put you.
I get that, but in order to figure that out, I need to ask Mr. Kennel if, if that gives him enough time to do what he's gotta do to answer Charlie's question.
Do we want to go off the record to do that and then come back?
Off the record and do that, well.
Do it any way you want.
Yeah, just do it that way because we already haven't opened the case.
Yeah, so, hey, I would just contact Charlie.
We opened the case.
Yeah, he announced it.
Wait, we, when I meant the case, I meant testimony.
Testimony.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I go off the record now?
Is, is October, what was that date in October?
October 5th, which is our next meeting. It's our first meeting in October and it starts at 7 o'clock. After that, I probably couldn't get them back on till November 16th because all the others have large applications on them and most of them have been, well, some are carried, so.
Todd, is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, the 5th, the 5th is fine for, for all of us, I believe.
Okay. Mr. Higgins, that, that good?
Yes, I'm good.
About, how about my professionals? Everybody good for that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, let me go ahead and just close this real quick. Case number BA 1926 Oakland Road LLC is gonna be carried to October 5th. It's 7 o'clock with no further notice. Expiration date, November, so you're good there. Okay, I would just suggest, Charlie, you and Mr. Kennel get, you know.
Can we do this right now? He's right there.
Yeah. I need to close the meeting now.
No, you don't. We're already.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Scott Kennel. I know, Charlie, if we can try to coordinate with the, the traffic safety officer and whoever else you think should be there, I can make myself available over the next two weeks. So, I mean, if you could lead that and let me know what available dates are, I'll make sure either myself or John Ray's available. So one way or another, we'll have it covered.
Yeah, I've already been in correspondence with the engineering department, so I will reach out to the deputy director of community development and then the traffic safety officer and try to schedule something for, ideally before the end of this week, if not early next week, if that's all right with you, Scott.
That'll be fine.
And then, like I said, we're just looking for striping and some signage just to clarify that, that where the two streets intersect there.
I understand.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, any more business before the board?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, Miss, Mr. Howard, Mr. Vino, I really, really appreciate everything. I think the meetings went very well tonight again. Thank you guys and thank you board members for being here. Thank, Todd, thank y'all.
Thank everybody for that time and no question, the Zoom meetings are definitely, they're definitely much better. They work great.
Oh, yeah. Much, much better.
Appreciate all the effort. Thank you.
All right, and don't forget, October 5th, we start at 7:00 P.M.
I wrote it down. Thank you. You need an extension?
No, you're good. You're good on time.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You too. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second.
Who made the motion, Mr. Saya?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, zoning board adjourned. I don't have a clock.
10:14.
Okay. Thank you guys. Thank you very much. See y'all October 5th.
October 5th.